Ready, Jesse? Perfect. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, March 25th, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Etskorn, Director Whitfield. We have student representatives Laura Wittenberg. Oh, actually, we don't have Lori yet. Okay, we have Sophia Willett here, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in Board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Agenda item at 1.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated March 25, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated March 25, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 2.01, strategic plan. We have Superintendent Sean Woodward, who will walk us through the draft strategic plan.
All right. So Jesse's a little nervous because he gave up. He's giving up control of this screen up here. So... Yeah, feel free. All right. So this is just a quick overview of our draft strategic plan. First, I want to thank Tamara and Erin, our communications team. We have a really, just a beautiful PDF and an online version. What you're seeing here is our PDF version. On the... Let me just kind of come over here. The website presence that we have, it's a little bit more detail when it comes to how do we develop the strategic plan. You can see on the front end, we've engaged, I've engaged, our team has, with hundreds and hundreds of people, whether it's big community meetings, focus groups, surveys, one-on-one meetings. We've probably, as far as, at least for my career, it's the process that I've been involved in that has had the most front-end input. The draft plan, and this, I think, is also a somewhat unique part of the process. We went back out once we published this draft and have been engaging and interacting with folks the last several weeks as well. What has happened, and I'm not surprised, is that the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, and we thought that would be the case if our draft truly reflected what we are hearing out in the community. So I think that's what you'll see with our plan. It really does feel like a community plan, for sure. Obviously, it's all translatable on our website. The thing that Erin and Tamara added was also a glossary of terms. I think that that's important. There's lots of acronyms and words that are unique to education. So at the very bottom of this big scroll, you'll find our glossary as well. So I will go back to just the PDF doc so you can see what is included in the PDF. As you can see, there is our vision statement, our revamped vision statement, our mission, our promise around belonging, believing, and achieving, as well as our value statements. These statements are really representative of what we're hearing from folks out in our community, as well as our staff members. It's a continuation of the commitment that we had here for years that we were basing a lot of our work on, and I want to just highlight these values that will drive the work that we do. Of course, not surprising that we have integrity in there, and what goes with integrity is a word that you hear a lot of, and that's transparency and being upfront and honest. One of our values is belonging, making sure that we have an inclusive and caring environment where all of our students, our staff, and our families, they feel like they are welcome, they're connected, they're respected. Collaboration is obviously something we need to continue to get better at. I think our plan is very comprehensive because we've collaborated with our community. We're a heck of a lot smarter together than we are as individuals. Excellence was talked about over and over and over again, that we need to really strive for a place greater than we're at today, and we need to make sure that excellence is driving our actions. Student-centered, for sure. We talk about what's best for kids, and we want our actions to align with that. And then equity. And I wanted to highlight that word because that has been a word over the last four or five years that that has taken a beating, and I want to make sure that people understand what we mean by equity in the Monroe School District. And it's really simple, that we make sure that each and every one of our students get what they need to be successful, and it's different for different students. It's not about holding any of our kids back. We expect every single one of our kids to make at least one year's worth of growth every single year. I've met with community members over this word, and I welcome people to come in and talk to me, and let's have a conversation about this word if you're worried about it. And I think one of the worries is that while we are supporting students that might need a little bit more support, does that mean we're holding other students back? And I would say that's a resounding no way. We're responsible for one year's growth for every child. So those are the values that will be driving our work. And the plan is outlined with goals, objectives, strategies. And one thing that's really evident in our plan that you might not see if you look at other districts' plans and the presence that they have online, ours is very clear what our performance indicators and targets are. That really puts us out there, and we want our community to hold us accountable for these things. You'll see when you review the plan that a lot of the numbers are to be determined because we are not collecting some of that data as of yet. So we have to get some baseline data. So... Oh, gosh, between now and the end of this school year, we'll be finding ways to collect that data so we can have that baseline before we start next school year. And every year, we will want to do two things. Number one, we will want to determine what is our focus area for any given year because we cannot accomplish all of this in any one year. We'll be making movement in each of the areas, but we need some more direction soon on what's really important to you, what do you want us to really focus on, and which areas do you want us to go the deepest in? And again, we'll make moves in every area, but we'll need more direction, and I'm anticipating that we'll have, much like we did last summer, we'll have to have some kind of board retreat to really dig into the plan and decide what your priorities are, for sure. And then we'll want to push that out to our community, our focus areas for this year or for next school year, and then we'll want to make sure we do a mid-year report and then the end of the year, you know, how did we do? So that's part of our plan. Here's our big-picture goal areas, you could call them priority areas or goal areas, but they're pretty simple. We want all of our students ready for their future. We want all of our students to be safe, known, valued, and supported. We want to recruit and retain an exceptional, caring workforce that reflects the diversity of the students we serve. We want to make sure that our family and community members are connected to schools and seen as valued partners. And finally, number five, we want to make sure we're effectively utilizing our resources and demonstrating transparency and fiscal responsibility. What I will not do this evening, because I don't think you want me to do that, is I won't go over every single objective and key strategy. I'll just go over one example from each area. I will tell you that for all students being ready for their future, the objective area that resonates with the most people that I've been able to interact with is Objective 1.1, and that is building a system to ensure our graduating seniors who complete a specified pathway are guaranteed acceptance to a post-secondary school or placement in a high-demand, livable wage job. We've had people look at us like, really? You think you can do that? And that's what we want people to be asking, and we're like, yeah, that's part of our vision. Obviously, we have to build out pathways that we are making sure that our graduates have certain skill sets that they can be seen as successful candidates for jobs, industry out in the world, and they obviously have to have the skills to also gain acceptance into a post-secondary pathway as well as far as a secondary school. It'll be our job to figure out how to do that, and that's, much of that is just through partnerships. I think Molly was there because she was with me, and Chuck was at our, what was the day called? Trade-up day. That was filled with local industry that are looking for people to work for them, that have certain skill sets. And I met up with a group there that they build out apprenticeships for students, much like Running Start. Instead of Running Start, it's kind of like a running start for the careers. Those are the kinds of partnerships that we need to develop in order to make sure that Objective 1.1 is accomplished. We also want to do things like, I've talked about this here before, we want to create a portrait of a graduate here. We want to make sure we know what it is that kids have to have outside of just their diploma so that they are ready for their future. I mentioned engaging in partnerships, building out pathways in high-demand fields, and then really, I think we do a great job with our high school and beyond plan, but I think, of course, we can do better as well, and we really need to make sure that kids see that as a living and breathing document that is really shaping, really helping them decide which pathways that they want to embark on. Those key strategies under each one of these objective areas really serve as examples. So one of the things that I heard out in the focus groups and one-on-one meetings, a lot of people had a lot of ideas that could also be key strategies. So it wasn't like, hey, you're missing something in the strategic plan. It was like, oh, I'm excited about this objective. What about this? What about that? We have a lot of, once we get direction from you as to, hey, if you say we want you to really focus fix your objective 1.1, then we'll get a team together to explore other strategies, developing an action plan, et cetera, to pull that off. So there's one example out of 1.1. I'll just go ahead and share a couple of examples of performance indicators as well. I'll use one tied to 1.1. One of them is, we want to increase our high school seniors' perceived readiness for their futures. We need to make sure this spring that we survey to get some baseline data from our high school seniors. Another one that might not be on here that we will want to add is, when Shannon presented the Perkins Grant, we're supposed to make sure that our current courses are aligned or CTE courses with in-demand industry. So that would be another example of a performance indicator or target that we might want to add. Oh, no, it's on there. Increase the number of industry certs available to students in CTEs. So again, I won't go over each and every one of those. Goal area two, all students are safe, known, valued, and supported. I'll go ahead and hit 2.3. That was, before I had applied, there was a lot of, oh, gosh, controversy over how we were dealing with harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So of course, that is outlined in this plan. We've come a long ways this year already to being more proactive when it comes to dealing with these things, and we've made a lot of adjustments, but we've outlined some other adjustments that we will also make as well. You can see in the performance indicators that, of course, we would measure that by decreasing the number of incidences, right, and increasing a sense of belonging felt by our students. So obviously, there's a lot more objectives in there. I mean, you got to really, that's a shout-out right now to, I think, I don't know if that was Tamara or Erin, but the pictures are absolutely beautiful. I'm sure we had some surprised parents when they looked at the, when they saw their students in the pamphlet. We did have a couple of phone calls, and it was a happy surprise. Goal three is just recruit, retain, an exceptional and caring workforce that reflects the diversity of the students that we serve. Nowadays, you mentioned the word diversity. That's another hot-button topic for folks. As y'all know, you've lived in the same world that I have the last five years. When we're talking about diversifying our workforce, we're still talking about, we always want to hire the very best candidates. Our issue right now is, we might have 60 applicants for any given position and not a lot of diversity in those applicants. We want to grow our applicant pool, make it deeper, make it more diverse, and we're always going to hire the best qualified candidate. Representation matters to our kids. Ask our students. I have done so, and they've said, yes, it does matter. It matters to us, it matters to them to have great teachers as well. So this wouldn't be sacrificing anything, and that's some of the emails and conversations I've had with folks. It's just doing a better job to ensure deep pools, more candidates of color, more qualified candidates in general. There's a lot of work to be done right now in this area. So always happy, because I know we have people watching our board meetings to sit down and talk about any of the issues that people might deem as controversial. That particular, let's go ahead and hit, let's see here, number, let's go with... Oh, let's go in to stick with that one. So Objective 3.1, that's just really working on our recruitment strategies to have a really deep pool. Have you heard that we have kind of a sub shortage? Right? That includes recruiting subs and making some, I met with six paras as part of a focus group Friday afternoon, and here's what they asked. They just asked, can you please just give us some hope that we can work on this one sooner than later? Because right now, today, we had about a 70% fill rate when it comes to our classified subs. And what that means is that people that are doing one job normally will have to shift over to maybe a higher niche area to cover for subs when they're not there. So it's, this impacts morale for our staff, of course. It impacts quality of services that we provide our students. That's Objective 3.1. So that's just really getting into how are we recruiting people? How are we training people? How are we making sure that people are comfortable walking into a classroom as a substitute staff member? Right now, there are some positions that I'm sure people would be nervous to take because they don't feel like they're ready to go. So we have to make sure we're training our subs up as well. So that's 3.1 by itself, we could say, pretty busy on. That's just an example there in that particular area. And let's see here, performance indicators and targets, an example would be... We want to increase the number of applicants for all of our positions, for sure. That's one of the metrics that we'll be tracking. We will be wanting to increase our staff diversity index. That just means that we want to measure the extent to which our demographic composition of our staff mirrors that of our student body. That's a worthy goal for us. There's a lot to that, of course. Let's see, last one, increase the percentage of staff members, including subs who are fluent in Spanish. We have a very large percentage of our families that come in, and they're not able to talk to anyone in our main offices. That's something that we want to work on, obviously. Number four, family and community members are connected to schools and considered valued partners. There's a lot here. One area that we've gotten a lot of feedback in is, well, two areas that I'll highlight. One is just, we really want to develop a world-class customer service model. That is huge. I've talked to folks about this all the time, that people just come in and they're just well-taken care of when they come in to interact with us here at the schools, wherever they're at. So that was a big theme and that we're excited to work on. And another is just, it's, some of these things are just a real mystery to our families, just like, just even a clear understanding of how to access services that a child might qualify for. So it would be special education, multilingual learners, 504 plans, gifted, highly capable, you name it, and help our families understand how to advocate on their behalf versus having to have some, an advocate come with them. We want it to be very clear. And how will we measure that? Here's an example in the performance indicators. We want to start surveying our parents around our IEP process. You know, I've had an IEP, part of the regular thing we'd ask is, how satisfied were you with that process? And, you know, a series of questions, that would be good to move the needle there. So again, there's a whole slew of performance indicators there. You can read through that, I know you have. And then the last one is around fiscal responsibility. I think the biggest thing that we've heard, one of the parent focus groups that came in last week, they came pretty fired up. They were ready for a conversation, and it was all about our facilities, specifically Sky Valley. And they knew they were coming to give feedback on the strategic plan, but I was really pleased to be able to turn to this objective and say, do you see your concerns here being addressed? And they're like, yes, we do. That's awesome. So they left hopeful, I would say would be the word to describe that, and we had a great conversation, but obviously, that's a heavy lift that I've mentioned to you that we, that we'll talk soon about a Citizens Facilities Advisory Committee and what that would look like for you to authorize this committee to work on behalf of you all to provide recommendations for you moving forward. So that's coming up. And then the last page has a little bit about our schools, what kind of programs we have, the languages spoken, and so on and so forth. So I think it's pretty comprehensive. I would say, once it was all in draft format, I think we were pretty confident, it was pretty comprehensive, but then the next feeling was, oh, gosh, kind of like, oh, that's a lot. So we got to get after it, and it's just, how do we do it? One bite at a time. So there's draft one, and we've made just a couple of adjustments based on the one that we originally sent out. There wasn't a lot of feedback to change, to change things. So I'm hoping that at the next meeting that you would formally adopt this, but happy to hear your feedback or take any questions that you have as well.
All right, I'll go first. Well, first off, I think it's beautiful. You know, I think the layout is gorgeous and it's very well done, so hats off to you and your whole staff. I think this is very well put together. I had a question. So most of the, all the goals are TBDs, and my concern is punting, or not punting, but going through all these really quickly at the end of the year, if we're not going to have enough time. So are we going to have like, two or three meetings to go over each one of the, or go over everything, and it's a tardy, we can have enough time? And then also, are we going to have a timeline associated with each of these goals, not just the percentage number?
Yeah, so two things. One, basically, we'll have all of these indicators in one spreadsheet, and I think we'll have time, I think for the most part, we have all of this information, so it'll just be a matter of sticking, getting the baseline data all in one place. And then what I'd like to do, and I'm open to just about anything if you're comfortable with it, would be develop some five-year goals for each of those areas based on our baseline, and then goals for next school year as well. So have five-year goals and first-year goals. So yeah, I think, you know, it's a lot to get done, but I think we can have it ready to roll by our summer retreat, for sure.
What month is that in? Is that June then?
We haven't decided yet, but... Yeah, it has to be past June 20th, otherwise it's spring.
Okay, so the plan is to kind of go over everything in one big?
Yeah, I mean, it's dependent on what you five feel like. I mean, last summer, we spent, I think, five hours or so together. So whatever you would like to do, I'm comfortable with. We could do it in a series of meetings here as well. So it's basically just our company scorecard that we'd be looking at.
Okay, great. And my other question is, there was a survey that went out about this. Are we going to have an opportunity to review the survey results?
Yeah, so I don't know if you participated or not, this thought exchange. I'll send you a link to the results. So if you did participate, especially towards the end, you could see all of the results because it's thought exchange, so it's all just like out there. But yeah, I'll send you the raw data as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Kudos to the team as well. I thought the same thing when I first saw this in the digital format. I remember when you gave us the original information in the raw form, it was a lot of information to digest, and so, not is it just aesthetically nice, I think it makes it very easily digestible for a community as well as say, not go, look at a giant piece of, you know, document, go, I don't know what I'm looking at. And so that is really great as well. I think my question goes off of Director Etskorn's a little bit. What is your target launch date to say? Final draft, survey data is taken, numbers are in, board has looked at it, and maybe we do need more than just our retreat. We could probably do a lion's share of it there, but say, hey, let's maybe have a meeting either side of that to kind of either prime the pump and do any follow-up that we need to, that we can maybe say, it's on the books, but if we don't need them, we don't have to do them, but it's there just in case about the time. What is your, is it in August? Is it by, you know, a week before school starts to have the final draft say, community? Here it is. Here's everything with the numbers, with the goals, with everything. What do you have in mind for that?
Yeah, so I'm hoping at the April 15th meeting that you can approve the content, the objectives, the mission, vision, values, goals, and the objectives. Key strategies will change, although let's really get into the weeds, but really what would be totally appropriate for you to approve would be the big-picture goals and the objectives. So then it's just like, all right, let's go. This is what you've adopted. And then the performance indicators, that will take a couple more months. So I would say definitely, definitely by July, because a lot of it's just like year-end data that we'll be collecting. So by our retreat, if, let's assume we do it in July, we'll have the scorecard on just one page with all of our baseline data that we were able to collect with our administrative recommendations for five-year goals and one-year goals, and then you can chew it up and make suggestions, we can adjust and go from there.
Okay.
When Sean first started this process, he told me the guidelines, and I went, what? It's going to take that long? And what? We're not going to have it done by August, December? But going through this, and the approach he's taken is wise, and I could see the, I could see the purpose, and I could see the reason for the community input, gathered information, talking to students, staff, community members, having focus groups. So it is something that is approved and wanted by the community, and that syncs in line with our, with our objectives. In fact, they tie in real well with the objectives. We came up with the last board retreat, I hang on to them in my book. Another thing, when I would, I like the way it's laid out. I would say if you're reading this, I read it several times, and I'm like, oh, that's missing. But what it does is, under the objectives, it's identified, and it's touched on. So I would recommend anybody that reads this to go through the objectives one by one, and that you'll see how things are, things were addressed. So it's very, very well laid out. It's... Our superintendent is doing well. I'm going to give him an A for this. Is this going to be ready for the next school year? I know in terms of, you just said that in the manner of speaking, the large picture, then the drilling down on the specifics. That's something that we're going to work on.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I think August, he, he's actually really what he asked to Jeremiah is August, we'll be ready to say, hey, it's all done now. We're just getting after it. Yeah, for sure. By August.
And one, one thing I asked you in private, but I'll, I'll share with you overall is that we're at the meeting is it seems like there are so many objectives and specifics that are laid out that we're going to be held accountable to the nth degree with all of these. And why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? There's a goal, there's an objective and you had a good.
Yeah, there's two, two parts to that. One is we'll have to remind people that we can't do it all in one year. And that for some people, they just, I, for some reason I envision a closet, you know, there's, there's a hanger in the closet for that issue that you're bringing up. It's right there and we're not ignoring it. It's, it's on the page. There's that piece that we'll have to remind people. And then oftentimes school district strategic plans are notorious for being total fluff jobs. I've done this long enough to know I've even been in districts, you know, right? That it's a little too fluffy. We wanted to have a lot of meat so people would, would know what it is that we are really talking about. So because this district, just like most districts right now in this organization, we have to give people hope for the future. And that this is part of building that trust is to have a good plan and then the following through is the next step. So that is, that is huge for people to really have a better understanding of what it is that we're talking about. And yeah. And as Chuck mentioned, the word accountability, we, I like the feeling of having our community partners holding us accountable. Saying you said you're going to do this. It's right here. So then we can get after it and build that trust.
You know, I've talked to feeding on this strategic plan, talking to a couple of firms and then other school districts and to have somebody develop this, it's anywhere from nine, 90,000 to $300,000 to have somebody come in, a consultant. And you, you've done the work. You've taken the approach of gathering this input. So you've already made your salary.
Well, thanks for that. I appreciate you saying it. And I did ask specifically if I could facilitate it because you gave me the option. And it was a very good way for me to get to know people. A, and then B, had we not had the kind of staff here, because I'm just one person. So it, it, it's really a very good team. I, I didn't know when I came in and asked to facilitate it, but now I can tell you, we've got a lot of the right people here doing this work. So yeah, so thanks for recognizing that.
Okay. My only comment, because everybody else has already said it. A year ago, this was a dream. This was something that we were pushing for, that we were wanting, we were chomping at the bit for this. And I could not be happier with the fact that I'm sitting here with a copy of this. You know, a way to move forward, a way to unite our schools together with a common vision and common goals to make it feel like one district instead of multiple different schools. This to me feels amazing and I'm excited to move forward and see what all this looks like and how it has the ability to transform our district, our schools and what it is that we're doing. So just excited.
Yeah, me too. Thank you for sharing that.
This looks great. It looks really good. I just wanted to say that I love that you were able to take a look at it from our operations and system standpoint. None of us on the board had ever seen one of these done. So this is a really great learning experience, not only for us, but I think our community as well. I love that we were able to partner up with our community and a lot of this work happened because of their voices and their concerns. And I appreciate that there is clear direction. Oftentimes in we've pointed to the Monroe commitment with no clear direction. And so this is super clear. And I just, since we didn't get to read this, I have to read this part. Our vision, we envision a future where every student in the Monroe School District will know and say, I belong and I matter. I am challenged, supported and successful in my learning. I believe in myself and my community believes in me. I feel connected to my learning, to my peers and to the adults in my school. I see a future I want and I know how to achieve it. That seems really, that's just really amazing to know that that's the vision. That's where we're headed and we have our community behind us in that work. So thank you for the work you've done and for the team that's put this together.
You're welcome. Yeah. Thanks for reading that as well. And one thing to be sure of as well is we're not waiting to do this work. So Jeremiah said, hey, when, when, when is this going to be final? Most everybody that we've met with, it's like, hey, can you get going right now on this? So we're, I'll give you one example. Dan and I met today, our executive director of human resources. And we're going to get a small team together to take a look at specifically our recruiting and onboarding of our classified staff. We have to get on it now so that this May, our fill rate is better than last May and that we can hit the ground running next school year. So a lot of these things, we're going to build the runway for now so that we can take off in, in, in September. So thank you for all the feedback and I look forward to you adopting this hopefully in three weeks. Yeah. Thank you.
So was there any discussion about, well, I was looking through the goal one indicators and was there any discussion about the students who are already meeting, you know, some of these goals, maybe something around like the highly capable program or something like that?
Yeah. So one thing that you'll see in there is, let's see if I can see it from here, is we have a growth measurement in there and there should be, let's see, towards the bottom. And I read, I ready is our growth measurement. So that would get at, we want to make sure that wherever you're at as a learner, wherever you enter the year, that you have at least a year's worth of growth. So thankfully we have a growth measure and it's not just an achievement measure. So we can make sure wherever you're at on that learning spectrum, you're making at least two years gain. And then on the other, the other piece of it that you mentioned specifically is there's a strand in there tied to our programming and we're going to look at our gifted, highly capable strand through and continuous improvement lens and develop an improvement plan for that as, as well. So we, we know we need to make some adjustments there too.
Could we find a performance indicator for that?
Yeah, I think we could. I'm not sure from a purely a metric standpoint, our I-ready measures, the growth, we'd have to come up with what would we want to measure? Maybe it's satisfaction would be one because it's something that we are, we're over. Our families that have students identified as gifted, highly capable, there's a lot of frustration with, with what we're able to offer, what we're currently offering. So yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Superintendent Woodward. Okay, moving on to agenda item 2.02. Let Superintendent Woodward.
All right. Okay. I promise I won't do an update tonight since I'm on the floor again. So, okay. So safety and security, you remember that we had a board workshop tied to this, your board goal around safety and security. In front of you is a summary and up on the screen of the items that Kelly Pitts went over at our board workshop. Kelly was asked to prioritize that list and he has done so. I also wanted to mention that in Brenda's mid-year review of where we're standing with our finances, we have about three, a little bit over $350,000 in budget capacity to take care of some of these items. If you, and we could get started right away if you choose to do so. So tonight we just wanted your feedback as to whether or not we should move forward on all of these projects or some of these projects. And Kelly's here to answer any questions you might have about any of these specifically. The ones that I hear most about, of course, is the fencing at, at Maltby. That's why it's number one on there. We hear a lot about the vaping issue and, and big time that comes up over and over and over. We're finally, we do, I think we do a really good job of a single point of entries in our school, but we're not locked down. We have an issue. We, we should have no areas where people can get in. So obviously we're slowly doing video doorbell entrances, but this would help us make sure we do that at every single one of our campuses as well as take care of the camera issue. Cameras can deter things from happening. But just as important after the fact, we can review camera footage just to make sure we're holding people accountable for bad behavior as well. So Kelly Pitts is back here. Do you want to maybe come up Kelly, just in case there's any questions?
Sean, and just to clarify, the cameras for Sky Valley at 28,000, that would be coming out of the Sky Valley budget?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you so much for bringing that up. So that total down there is minus the, the, the 28, 28,000. I mean, Karen and I have met once already. We're meeting again Thursday. Their building budgets are different than the standard building budgets there. We, the way that that building operates from a financial standpoint is different than every one of our other buildings. So yes, that's not included in the, the big round number down on the bottom.
Sorry, Kelly, you can just stand there and hang out for a second. This one's for Sean as well. So with this, as we've discussed in the past, and we've alluded to, I think in the previous meeting as well, when Brenna gave her presentation for the mid-year report. This just under 300 grand than if it would be if we took that out of it as far as general funds to 291,700. Thank you, Director Barnes. That number that we would be looking at pulling that from fund balance as well, correct? That his, because we kind of are high in that area where she want to start allocating some of those dollars.
Yeah. So the, the, the good news is for this year, our revenues from a revenue and expenditure standpoint, we're coming in under on the expenditure side of the tune of 378,000 or something.
The mid-year report is attached this evening as well, but we were coming in roughly 600 and some less in revenue, but we were also on track to spend about 900 and some less in expenditure. So the difference is that 300,000 roughly that we were at mid-year February, expected to add to fund balance at the end of the year. So with this, you would be spending that so that we would net zero in a perfect world, but there will be fluctuations. So there's always a possibility we would dip into fund balance a little bit, but not hugely.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at was I was going to get to the net, the net difference that we had if we were basically having a net positive for the year into that. And this was eating that up. Awesome. All right, Kelly, my next one is for you then. Because I don't want you to feel left out, buddy. So my, my question for you was on the prioritization of these ones where you feel the risk management we have for our school. Do you feel like these are kind of at the top of that list? I know we could keep going deeper and deeper. I mean, you, you had, you gave a really extensive presentation of the areas we can go. But of that, of those most vulnerable and needed areas, is there things in here that you were saying, hey, there's something else maybe that was, this, this is more important or are these kind of those top priorities?
These are the top priorities that I think, you know, we had addressed and spoke of. And then in kind of a priority list, top to bottom from this slide, what I would see based on, a lot of it based on the challenges of the phone calls and the things that I have to address every day.
And then I was wondering, the last time you presented to us, we were discussing a new system for you. It was kind of the outdated system that had a lot of holes in it for the follow-up because it was not really designed for what you needed it for. Where does that come in as well for that?
And that's in there and that.
That was, oh, that's the incident, that, yeah, thank you. The incident report case management software.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah. So it is listed in there.
I want to make sure we're supporting that way. Thank you.
Hey Kelly, if we do this, what does the timeline look like? I, it seems like a lot of work. So I'm curious. Are we going into summer? Do we have people on staff to help with this?
There's, it really depends. One of the big ones is really that first one. Cause I foresee metals as one of those big constraint pieces that a lot of companies, I think, in the contractor and construction world, I think getting metals is, seems to be one of those deals. Even getting them to come out, the first person that came out, and I started talking to him about it, said, oh, hang on, I don't even do that. So we had to find somebody else. They can't even get on to coming out and, and giving us a good number on it until first week of April. We scheduled as fast as we could. But I also foresee that they're one of the limiting probably constraints, like the camera work, some of the regular chain link type fencing. Some of those things I think can easily get to by July. I think some of them, you know, like obviously the software stuff, that's an easy earlier piece, but I don't know to the extent of some of the, the cable running for the cameras. There's, there's a lot there. And so I know we have to get it done by that August kind of deadline. And that's what we're shooting for, which is why I would like to start it as early as possible. So that the company would have the, the most amount of time they can get.
So to, one of the questions I have is with any of the software that we're talking about items two or three, are there any fees, yearly fees going forward that are associated with either of these?
Yes. So the, the, the one that has the reporting case management piece is about $12,000 a year. The other one is 7,600, but we're already at about 5,600. So they're really the change in going to that one. After we get the equipment and then the install stuff is really about a $2,000 variance for what we're doing already.
And was there any costs associated with our current incident report managing system?
On, that would be the case management piece.
Right. So do we pay anything currently for the one that we currently have?
No, we don't. Sorry.
Okay. Perfect. And then is there anything else on the list? Like the vape sensors, those shouldn't have a yearly fee?
No, there's a licensing fee upfront. After that, it's kind of like cameras would, you know, if one fails, then there may be potential for replacing it. But once they're in, they're, they're part of what we're already paying.
Okay. So it's just with those two things, about a $14,000 per year increase on spending.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for putting this list together. I've said a couple of questions. Do the principals of each school agree this is the top thing they need?
They've had some input. I've, I've talked to most of them. I didn't ask specifically, I didn't show them this list and say, hey, what do you think? Cause I think in each of the individual principals is probably going to go, nope, I don't agree with that. That needs to be up higher here and they're going to prioritize their own schools. So a lot of this really was built on, like I said, a lot of the phone calls and the conversations that are, that are ongoing day to day out of my office going, hey, this is becoming an issue or this is less of an issue.
But I mean, at least for the things, you know, like Maltby, I assume they, they agree that's their top thing.
I have had conversations with Christine and, and told her that that one is an obvious one for, for I think for me.
Okay. And are these estimates or are these already quotes from multiple bids or what status this is?
Most of the camera work is like really close dollar wise. We've already had them come out and do some hard numbers on Sky Valley. And we used that one and had them come back in and look at the other schools. So most of the camera ones are like pretty much dead on. The one, the one big one was the, is the malt beat fencing up front. Cause we have not yet been able to have anybody come out. I mean, putting that number on there is kind of a little bit of a guesswork.
Okay. So for some of these, we still need to go through the process of getting multiple bids.
We still have to get the bid process.
And then what, what didn't make the list?
So there's a lot more work that could be done with some of the true vegetable. Like there was some, we actually, Jesse and I found some paperwork in our, in our, some prior work done by my predecessor where they talked about putting up some hard walls and I didn't look at those because of the numbers. work done by my predecessor where they talked about putting up some hard walls. And I didn't look at those because of the numbers I think are larger capital improvements. Like putting up a big wall and running a lot more cabling, changing your HVAC flow. The high school would be like a vestibule wall that would be interior where the normal entrance is. There'd be more doors on that. And that project alone would be higher than dollar wise than kind of a, just a check the box sort of fix. So we had had discussions about that possibly being on either levy or bond or maybe a different grant.
And my last question, so last time I heard about these vape sensors, you or someone else was going through testing them? Like how, how did that go? And I guess I'm curious about how easy are they vandalized if we spend this money to put them in or in there, destroy the next day?
So we, we finally got one in. It took much longer than I had hoped. It has vandalism sensors in it. So if somebody starts to mess with it, it has a sensor that goes off. It also has sensors that do more than just the vape. It'll actually sense like fights. So if you have a large enough group in a, in a bathroom. And the decibel rating goes up high enough in a group. And that has a tendency to set it off. It's going to still take us some more time to kind of figure out where those sets, settings are. And it'll help when we have more done in it. Right now, the kids all know that's the one bathroom that has it. And so they just don't use it because they figured out that the comment was, it looked, there's a disco ball going off in the bathroom. Because there's a bunch of new lights they, they noticed. Hopefully, when they don't have that option and all of the bathrooms have it, then they don't have to worry about it.
So is there a cage around them? So they're not easily
No, there's some, there's some sensors, like if you were to take a screwdriver or something like that to it, the motion or the, the the vibrations and messing with it, set it off. Thank you.
Kelly, I appreciate your law enforcement background and looking at this overall and the threat assessment. So I appreciate that. I'm going to cover in my board comments, we went to Sultan for some interviews for some students. And like usual, I got lost and I went to the Maltby school first and they had a, they had an intercom system. And asked for where the candidate review was and they said, no, it's, it's down for further. So had a nice lady come out and give me the directions. And then I went to the high school and they also had the intercom system, which seemed like it was pretty slick in terms of identifying who was coming in. Having something like that at the schools, how do you think that would come across with people's right of entry or what they're, what they're used to? Just be kind of tough. You're going to deal with it.
Yeah, there's communications is always a big one, right? Pick any major incident I've ever been involved in. And then when we debrief it afterwards, communication is always the one that everybody criticizes the most. It's always got the most room for improvement. And then you're going to get two sides of the, the coin on it. I think there is a huge number that would say, yeah, I really want to know. And then there's another side of that coin that says, I don't think I should be announced. Every time I come in, I feel like it's overwhelming. You don't have to do it. See both sides. I'd rather have the knowledge upfront. I'd rather have the knowledge that somebody's coming in or who it is. And at least we'll call it a TSA pre-screen. At least I've got some sort of information prior to that person walking through the door about what they're there for. And a little bit of some information. And kind of where we're at right now, with the bulk of the schools is at least the ability to look at a camera or through a window and go, you know, are they wearing a trench coat and carrying a shotgun? Or are they? They, they look like their parent getting ready to pick up a kid. And in especially the elementary schools, I think I've had conversations with all the office managers. And they're probably going to know ninety percent of the people that walk up to that that door, that camera within a few months of school starting. They're going to go, oh, there's Mr. Mrs. Smith. They're here to pick up their, their child. But it's the, it's the unknowns. And the first time that one parent shows up, that's not even supposed to be at the school or not supposed to pick up their, their student. Gives them that screening ability to, to look up and go, they shouldn't be here. And they, maybe they have no, there's a protection order in place or something. Even more unusual. And they're usually on the radar for those things.
Yeah, well, I like I like when we could implement something like that. Also, kind of another subject we're going to cover is we visited Park Place Middle School and Frylands. And I checked security and reviewed that. And they had both gone through multiple fire drills and shelter in place. So thank you for that. So the students are prepared. So that's kind of outside this conversation, but I'm, I'm in agreement to go with all these right at this time.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly, for keeping our kids safe. We got to test out the one at Frylands with the camera and the doorbell. Cindy was really excited about it. I was really excited to hear about it. So thank you for, for updating that. Lieutenant Woodward?
Yeah, so we were just, it doesn't require like official board action, just consensus. See, if you, you know, if you all, because we have the room in the budget, you already adopted the budget. So if you're ready for us to move forward, Kelly will get on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item three point zero one, consideration of donations.
Okay, so we've got five different donations. First one is from Bearcat Pride that donated to the Monroe School District, a monetary grant in the amount of one hundred and seventy two dollars and seventy five cents for the sole and express purpose of Sports Med to use as they see fit. That is very awesome. Number two, again, Bearcat Pride donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of Mr. Wolf's Moose Watch for Educators Workshop. That sounds really interesting. I'd love to know more about that. Mary, so third one, Mary L. Hoffman donated to the Monroe School District, a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of Salem Woods Elementary, fourth grade Northwest Railway Museum Field Trip. Oh, awesome. That is very awesome. Those kids are going to have an amazing time. Number four is Darwin Swanson hereby donated to the Monroe School District, a monetary grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of supporting the needs of teachers. Very cool. And number five, Little Wonders Montessori donated to Monroe School District, four tables, ten chairs and one bulletin board with the value being estimated at one thousand eight hundred dollars. So again, another huge thank you to all of those who continue to partner with us to support our students and provide awesome things like tables and chairs and field trips and Moose Watch for Educators Workshop.
I want to just jump in here as well. And for my friends who are Bearcat Pride, one of the things I found out at being a new high school dad was when you work concessions as a parent volunteer in any of our sporting events, the time that you do, basically instead of paying, that goes toward Bearcat Pride and you get to choose what area that you want that to go for. So it can be for the class of whatever graduating class, maybe your kid is in that graduating class. It can be for these same types of things. And so I love seeing that because a lot of times what these, these first two with Bearcat Pride are doing is these are parents, a lot of times that are working a lot of hours in those types of things who are helping with that. And then that is going towards those areas to, to help. And so for parents who are watching, who are listening, if you have high schoolers or future high schoolers, which is everybody else. And you want to get involved, whether it's things that do not do, you know, these types of things, whether it's, you know, the watchdogs program or reading with, or helping cut out things for your kid's kindergarten teacher. Or just bringing your kid's teacher a cup of their favorite coffee. Those are just huge things, but these are also ways that you can help when you can say, well, I can't donate a certain thing, but I do have time I can donate. It actually does turn into those types of things to help those programs, which is a really cool thing too. So that was a, a non-planned plug for that. But I just love seeing that because that is, what that is, is the fruit of a lot of parents who are just putting a lot of time in to help donate those types of programs to help their students. Or, or programs that are near and dear to their heart as well.
Thanks, Director Campbell. Go Bearcats. Okay, agenda item three point zero two, student representatives. We have our student representative, Sophia, who will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district.
Hi. So at the high school, we're still kind of focusing on schedules for next year. So counselors have been meeting with every junior to make sure they're ready for their senior year next year. And then the Latina Student Union is hosting a fundraiser at the boys soccer game, which will be home on March twenty sixth at seven thirty, where they will be selling hot chocolate and pen. I'll say, we'll say. Culture night is March twenty eighth at six in the MHS Commons. And then ASB is hosting a talent show, April third from six to seven thirty PM.
Okay, I have to know, what did you do with the amazing weather that we had?
Like the rain or the sunny? Over the weekend, we were in Yakima and it was actually really nice there. It was hot. And then before that track was, is really nice running in the sun. It's a lot easier.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero one, consideration of revisions to policy thirty two thirty one, student records. This is the second reading. Is there a motion? Oh, we don't, sorry. Agenda item three point zero three, we have no public comments. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy thirty two thirty one, student records.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy thirty two thirty one, student records. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Woodward, I do appreciate, we, we had some discussion first reading for this and you talked about adding some of that extra language. And so I really do appreciate the, like with the withholding of the, the diplomas thing that we won't withhold transcripts or grades. And then even the opportunity of like, hey, if their amount owed is more than this thousand dollars thing, it gives them an opportunity for families who are in different, difficult financial situations. Say, okay, well, we can work this out in community service hours. There's other opportunities to say it's not just something to do whatever, but at the same token, it's a way to like invest in those kids, but also provide a way out. And I love that. So that way they can still be able to move on with the things they need for those transcripts. So I appreciate that language.
Anyone else?
I checked the schedule for retention that the school district has to have. My gosh, we have a full department for that, don't we? Your Dan, there is all kinds of retention schedules. I'm used to that a little bit with Department of Licensing. But as usual, everything with the school district is ten X. And I'd just like to thank the staff that's in charge of that, keeping us compliant. There's a lot and there's different levels.
And thank you Superintendent Woodward for helping us continue to do the work that needs to be done on all of our policies and updating these. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item is passed five to zero. Agenda item four point zero two, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts, approves the donation received from Chase Farrell.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts and or approves the donation received from the, from Chase Farrell. Discussion?
Mr. Woodward, I emailed you about this a little bit. Would you share a little bit about this, this donation with the rest of the board?
Yeah, you bet. It's a local business owner is kind of going out of business and liquidating. And had a whole bunch of supplies that he knew that we would use. So just donated all, all of those dry erase markers and erasers, et cetera, to our district. So we appreciate that.
As a former teacher, you burn through dry erase markers pretty fast.
For sure.
Special thanks to Mr. Farrell for doing that. That's awesome for our staff.
I had chalk though, when I was teaching. It's been that long ago.
What's chalk?
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item five point zero eight, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item six point zero one, Superintendent update. We haven't heard enough from you today, Superintendent Woodward. Thank you, Superintendent Woodward.
I got a couple of questions for her.
Okay.
So we've been talking about the transition to the kindergarten advertising. Just kind of when are we going to review that advertisement?
Well, if you yeah, look online and you will see the big banner that says that we're open for business. So yeah, so we're, it's open, we're pounding the pavement and trying to get parents to sign their kids up.
So we're just relying on the website?
I'm not sure exactly what else is, is, is going on, but if you were to want to follow up, we can do a one-on-one and chat about that.
Yeah, definitely. I'm curious about that. And then we, I'm not sure if it's already done as well, but we're going to review the cell phone policy and kind of feedback from
Yeah, so that, I've talked a little bit with Director Campbell about that. And we're thinking that we want to make sure that we backwards plan it in such a way that we can be ready if we want to have a cell phone policy to kick next school year off with. So I'll talk to Jen and Jeremiah at our next agenda planning meeting and we can decide when to get that on. But I would say it'd be good to at least have by the second meeting in May, have a first look at it. I think if we, two or three meetings, we should be able to hash something out. There's a lot of good examples out there. So.
Great, thanks.
You bet.
Okay, agenda item seven point zero one, board reports and or comments.
I do want to direct the rest of you guys to the school district Facebook page. There are wonderful pictures of us hanging out with the developmental preschool program and eating green eggs and ham, which were delicious, by the way. Kudos to the staff who made those. And hanging out and checking out all of the leprechaun traps that they made. That was a lot of fun. There's a giant picture of me eating that and it looks like I'm almost ready to throw up, but I actually just had a face full of eggs and ham and it was delicious. So I actually enjoyed it. Green eggs and ham, they were awesome. I think that for me, one of the things that was really great about that, that tour, and thank you so much to, to I just totally spaced. Thank you, Jeff Presley, Principal Presley and his staff for having us come out to that. And I think that for me, seeing, one, seeing kids all the time is the highlight of being able to do this, having, and the littles are just it's, it's not just that they're cute and adorable and they're bright eyed and bushy tailed, but to see how much they're advancing. And those programs, especially kids who have a lot more challenges, a lot more barriers in front of them to be ready. I think a lot of people don't understand, my wife was a kindergarten teacher and you don't, people think, oh, yeah, all kids, kindergarten is just a starting point. You have some kindergartners who come in who they know their whole alphabet, they know how to write their name, they know how to tie their shoes, they know ABCs, they're ready for like first grade. And they're doing some, and other kids who've never held a crayon in their life. And so it's just that distance to make sure that these kids are so ready to be set up for success. I'm excited. I know that there's talk about legislation of getting more state funding for the transition to kindergarten program, bringing that down even more. I guess my big concern with this, it's not concern more of a question, Mr. Woodward, is spacing. As we have, like, I know we pulled everything out of Frank Wagner, just because Frank Wagner is busting at the seams. We put a lot of that now at Frylands. What does this look like in the future as we grow? And, and Principal Presley walked us through kind of the rubric of okay, what are the different needs that we have to prioritize families as they apply for the program? But when we look at our developmental preschool and our transition to kindergarten programs and, and also the data they're tracking of saying like this year's first graders, where are they at? And then tracking that along the way of how have this, how has this helped them? I want to see that kind of data down the road. I'm excited, but I'm also going, but I know that there's more need. So how do we make sure we have room for kids? What does that look like?
So just from a physical standpoint, we have, we have space because obviously we've been kind of in a declining, declining enrollment situation where it's leveling off and hopefully we'll start building up. But, but I met with David Perator last week or after the last board meeting and he's all right, all ready. But I met with David Perator last week or after the last board meeting and he's already already identified spaces. We we think realistically. We could. Expect. Probably no more than about two additional classrooms next year. We could do four if we had four, it'd be a great problem to have. But at some point, you're right, I mean. At some point. We're not sure what's going to go on with this in the in the long term, if the state's going to continue to fund this at at the levels because it's catching on more and more to. And of course, only a certain percentage of four year olds will qualify, but. We're good in the near future, long range, we would, we would not have enough space and would have to get pretty creative, I think.
Okay.
So sorry, I'm gonna jump on there since it was mentioned. I visited Frank Wagner, they said they had an extra class and there's. Was there any talk about having like that ninety ten model for M L L? TK program?
So so we can come back into a board presentation on 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 our dual language program. We are making some adjustments. To the program, but I can invite Hugo to come. He's he's wanting to come and present to y'all because we're making some pretty significant changes.
I'm at a specific TK program, transition to kindergarten.
Yeah, like I said, that's that's part of it. That's that isn't something that we've discussed with the administrative team as of yet, but. That is something that we would like to be able to do, but nothing to report as of yet on that.
So. What's the TK? Goal in the strategic plan? What category that'd be under? About about expanding it and.
It would, it would actually be in goal number one is where it would where it would fit.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if it's explicitly stated, but. And if you want it to be, we could explicitly state it. It's just something that. That's a wonderful example of equity right there.
Yeah.
Our entire district, we're going to be looking at opportunities, not just there, but. All levels of learners to to increase. And if we live that value, we will be increasing programs such as TK. That one is just like an absolute no brainer, but we could, we could include it in there, so it's memorialized as well.
Thank you. Actually, you get it past a certain age and you have a de-education, so you, I read that, I forgot it, so. Kindergarten going up. Your older going down. A lot of these things tie into the the visit I did at the Salton School District. We, as I mentioned last time, we had. Students of the month for Rotary, we interviewed twenty students in the Sultan. We interviewed eleven. And Sultan is tied for space. We're talking about. Coming up with a couple of rooms. They have portables all over the place. They have. Problems with with busing, they have their bond failed, so. You know, we're in, we're in good shape. Terms of space. Enjoyed the school visits to Park Place and Frylands. We had to go to the classrooms, poke in and see the kids. With the insult and. We were looking at. You know, students that apply for these scholarships. And they're usually. You know, really capable students. One of the things they did that, one of the community service projects they did. One of them was a blood drive. They collected a lot of blood that they donated. To the blood banks. Another one is they had an anti-vaping campaign. And the students. Actually made presentations to other students, to staff and to parents, and that was. That was real valuable, had good feedback on that. And one thing else. That. Came in with highly capable. Is that they have. Some of the students were really top notch. One of them was going to become a doctor. And she just said that there's lack of AP classes and they wish they had AP classes like in Monroe. And. One of the things, one of our kids that interviewed kids, twenty two years old. I was on the committee with me, Zach Humphries. He just went to to Washington DC as a member of City Monroe and was part of. The National Association of Cities. It was Monroe was represented along with twenty five hundred schools and he attended a presentation where President Biden was there, Susan Del Benny. Marie Cantwell, Patty Murray and got to meet the House Speaker. Mike Johnson. And he made a comment, he says that. The entire Washington DC is entirely run by one young people. So I don't know if that's a. Good thing or bad thing, getting the young kids in there, changing things, but I thought that was an interesting observation. With, we're working on board policy with David Perator about policy sixty seven hundred. Nutrition, health, physical fitness. That was an area that I wanted to join the committee. And we've had some discussions. Several meetings and one of the this last meeting we did was basically an assessment tool. And I'll just read these categories. So there's nutrition education. So and again, looking at the school district, how are we doing in terms of educating the students for it for nutrition? Meeting the standards of USDA school meal. School meals. New nutritional standard selection. Physical education and physical activity. Think last was wellness promotion. And marketing. So we spent a couple of hours on this, didn't we, David? Going through question by question, we had. We had Kelly there from food services, so to see. With nutrition and with if we were compliant with USDA requirements and with the federal requirements. And we did, we did really well. There's a couple of areas that we need to work on. But it's kind of an overall. Review of how we're doing with feeding the kids and keeping them active. So that was. That was helpful and that was something we have to review by board policy every three years. So thank you, David, for that. And I was thinking that we should have a presentation on it at some point in the future because it. It just, even though it's a little dry, it it. It hits on a lot of the areas that were, I think, as adults and as parents. We'd be interested in just those two, those two entire categories, what they eat and keep them active. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Whitfield. Just a couple of things, dual language info night is tomorrow. At six P M. Is it tomorrow? It is tomorrow. Tomorrow at Frank Wagner at six P M. Transition and kindergarten applications are online, so if you know someone with like a four year old, just send them the information. Sure they'll appreciate it. And then there is multicultural night up at the high school this Thursday from six to eight P M. I think Molly and I are going. So if you guys are going. Don't walk with us. Yeah, James, you'll stick out if you walk with us. All right, it is. You got Molly, sorry.
No, just really quick, our J R O T C went and competed at regionals. And they took third place in armed drill and this was out of thirty six schools that they competed against in the region, so. I really wanted to give a shout out to them for a job well done. We're so super proud of them. And then also just a little bit more about that trade up event. It's the second time that. Monroe High School has facilitated this event with our amazing CTE support team. So we've got Shannon, Michelle, Brenda and Shannon. Two Shannons in there, but they just did a phenomenal job. We had fifty students combined from Monroe High School leaders and also Sky Valley, so that was an amazing opportunity for them to go. And see all sorts of different jobs that they could do, whether it was, you know, electrical, concrete work. You know, working, doing flagging. Snohomish County jobs, all sorts of different things. So that was really hands on learning experience for them and the conversation with Ajax was. Really. Made me really hopeful for some of the things that we can do. Superintendent Woodward alluded to it earlier when they where they had pathways that students could take. So that was really neat. And then also. I wanted to give a. Just sort of a something awesome that happened at Sky Valley, so they had thirty teens attend their second Leadership Institute. That they held on March fifteenth and some of the skills that they went over in this was active listening, tell me more skill. And then the and stand skill and most of the kids coming into this. Knew nothing about any of these skills and almost every single one of them coming out of it knew what the skill was, knew how to use it, knew when to use it. And ninety percent of the students shared that the training was a useful use of their time and eighty six percent. Want Sky Valley to host more training sessions like this, so. A huge shout out to Monroe Public Schools Foundation for the grant that allowed them to purchase lunch for these teens that wanted to come and attend this. So I love the fact that Sky Valley is always. Going out there and doing all sorts of classes for parents, for students, just trying to help improve the community and enrich the lives of our families and students, so. Yeah, that's, oh, and then just another thing that was worked on today, we're working on a spring soiree mixer for six.